Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 17, 2023. We are going to get started with our agenda, and the first item is roll call. Can you please call the roll?
Thank you. Council President Voice, Councilmember Fincher, here. Councilmember Core.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michaud.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Kim. Moving on to approval of the agenda, do we have any changes from councilor staff? All right. Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Yes. Madam President, I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Moving on to department presentations, the first comes from our operations, and we have approval of the minutes from the October 3 meeting.
Madam Chair, I'd move for approval of the minutes.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Minutes pass. Next is payment of the bills. Do I have a motion?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I move for payment of the bills.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So some of that items we have to take care of during the beginning of this meeting are just customary, so I appreciate you letting us do that. But next up, we have our 2023 legislative agenda, and I'm going to welcome Brianna Murray to come and fill us in on what's coming.
I'm Brianna Murray with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Relations. I'm the city's lobbyist and advocate on your behalf down in Olympia. This evening, we're going to talk about preparing for the 2024 legislative session. As part of tonight's presentation, I'm going to outline for you expectations around the 2024 session, review a draft 2024 legislative agenda for your consideration, and then dedicate some time to answering your questions. Starting first with an overview of what to expect during the 2024 session, I'll remind you that the legislature operates on a two-year cycle, and we are entering the second year of that two-year cycle. As it is the second year, it is a 60-day session or a short legislative session, also referred to as a non-budget year. After the 60-day session, all members of the House and roughly half the members of the Senate will be up for reelection in November 2024. Often, what this means is that the short 60-day session does not include a lot of action on highly controversial issues. Legislators are very concerned around reelection and what actions they take in the 2024 session and what that could mean for their November 2024 reelection. With that being said, the legislature does have some tasks before them during the short 60-day session. First and foremost, they need to develop mid-biennial supplemental operating capital and transportation budgets. During the 2023 legislative session earlier this year, they adopted biennial budgets that are in effect July 1 of 2023 through June 30 of 2025. During the 2024 session, they will go in and in each of those budgets make modifications based on changes that have occurred since they concluded the 2023 session. Additionally, all bills that were introduced in the 2023 session that did not pass into law automatically carry over and remain under consideration in 2024. In addition to that, they're able to introduce new policy bills or new proposals in the 2024 session. This means that there are often more bills under consideration during the second year of the legislative session than in the first year. There are a few challenges that the legislature faces that are specific to issues that have come up since the 2023 legislature convened their work in May. You'll recall they had a one-day special session, so they've been in intra-months and not in session since May. The first is that within the transportation budget, the Washington State Department of Transportation has proceeded forward in trying to implement or construct the projects that the legislature allocated funding to. And as part of that, they have been going out to bid to identify different contractors to construct projects, and the bids that they're receiving in response are 30% to 60% higher than the amount of funding that the legislature allocated. So in the immediate short term, the legislature is going to need to grapple with how to fund the funding delta between what the amount was that was appropriated and then the amount that they've actually already awarded. Wash dot proceeded forward in actually awarding several projects that they didn't have identified funding for. The other component of that conversation is really around the next transportation revenue package. There's wide recognition that the resources available for transportation are insufficient, and so conversations are beginning to occur around what another round of investments in transportation would look like. I'd anticipate that not to become a very real conversation in 2024, but to solidify as we look toward the 2025 session, which means this 2024 session is going to be a little bit of a numbers crunch or a pinch when it comes to the transportation budget. The second issue that the legislature is facing is around behavioral health and associated with the True Blood decision. The True Blood decision has been in existence for several years, was a court decision that found that the state was not adequately providing competency evaluation and restoration services to individuals who had been deemed incompetent to stand trial. The original court case said the state, in failing to do that duty, was depriving individuals of a speedy trial and that the state has an obligation to increase its competency restoration and evaluation, evaluation and restoration services. They entered into, the state entered into a settlement that the court approved on how to come into compliance. However, since the legislature concluded their session earlier this year, the court has reviewed that settlement and the state's actions and have found that the state has not complied with the settlement and has issued a fine against the state for $100 million. So the state is motivated to take action during the 2024 session specifically on behavioral health to come into compliance with the True Blood settlement, but there's also a lot of motivation to make investments in behavioral health more holistically, not just this population that needs competency evaluation and restoration services through the forensic system. The third topic that is facing the legislature is around the Climate Commitment Act or Cap'n Trade System. Since the legislature concluded in 2023, Department of Ecology has conducted the three different auctions under the Climate Commitment Act and Cap'n Trade System where emitters of greenhouse gas emissions purchased allowances for the amount that they're, the amount that they're allowed to emit under the act. The purchase of those allowances through the auction has resulted in auction prices that are much higher than anticipated and much higher than what is occurring in other areas of the world that have a cap-and-trade system like California and Quebec. Going into the 2024 session, anticipating legislative discussion around the Climate Commitment Act that's twofold. The first is how to make adjustments or modifications to the Climate Commitment Act to have the emissions auction, sorry, to have the auction price be lowered. And Department of Ecology is anticipated to have an announcement at the end of this month or early November on whether or not the path forward to lowering that auction price is linking Washington State's cap-and-trade system with Quebec and Canada, or sorry, Quebec and California. Quebec is in Canada. The second policy conversation they'll have around the Climate Commitment Act is how to spend those additional revenues that have been generated. Nearly $1 billion in additional revenue beyond what was forecasted has been generated. There'll be a robust debate on whether that money goes back to individuals in the form of rebates or whether it is allocated to projects that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So with that context in mind, I'm going to transition us to chatting a bit about your 2024 legislative agenda. You'll recall that traditionally, the city's legislative agenda consists of two documents. We're continually trying to remain focused for our legislators, but also cover the plethora of topics and dozens of bills that get introduced that impact city government. So we really do focus on trying to distinguish between what are our top priorities and then what are all of the other issues that we have policy statements on. The other item that I, as we think about your legislative agenda that I want to emphasize is that we should be thinking about the city's legislative agenda in the context of the two-year perspective. And during the first year of the legislative biennium, the city experienced some really good successes. There were many things that were frustrating about the 2023 session, but there were also some really good items that we were able to accomplish that were specifically on the legislative agenda. So we secured $1 million for the East Hill North Community Park. We took the lead on passing legislation to increase penalties around street racing. We worked on the timely allocation of funding for some key transportation projects like Meet Me on Meker in the 224th corridor. And the city, and this extends far beyond me and into many of city staff members, did a significant amount of engagement on the land use and housing policies and possession of controlled substances. And city staff really dedicated a lot of additional time beyond their normal typical job to evaluating bills and providing feedback to the legislature. So if we're thinking about this in a two-year context and we want to identify top priorities in the broader policy document, we, what we have before you is a document that outlines a very significant, heavy lift top legislative priority, but only one, because it is a short 60-day session and I only have two hands and 10 fingers. And so the top priority item that is included in your materials is a request of the legislature to authorize council manic taxing authority to fund public safety and asking the legislature to take action on that in 2024 so that the city council can effectively lead the community and help residents feel safe at home, work at parks, restaurants, and throughout their daily lives. Under current law, cities are authorized to impose up to a .01 public safety sales tax with voter approval. This proposal would authorize cities to impose up to a .03 sales tax increase with council manic approval dedicated specifically to public safety. It is a priority for the Association of Washington Cities and is what is recommended as being your sole and top priority for the 2024 session. In addition to your top legislative priority, and to be clear, that this proposal, this legislation on council manic authority is where I would spend the bulk of my time and energy as your advocate on behalf of the city. This is a heavy lift. It requires a significant amount of outreach, far beyond just the members of the city's legislative delegation. It will require engagement in a bipartisan fashion and working with both sides of the aisle. So this is, this is a significant effort, and I just want to highlight the amount of time and effort it's going to take, and in short 60 days, that's why you only have one priority before you. I think that with this being the top priority, there's not much bandwidth to do much more than this. The, the second component is your policy document, and as a reminder, this policy document is quite lengthy. I think it's over five pages this year. The purpose of this document is to educate and be a resource to legislators on what's going on in the Kent community and the issues that are important to the Kent community. This document also provides me with direction on those items that you all want to, want me to be tracking, want city staff to be monitoring and engaging on, and those issues that you want to see included in weekly reports. It also helps particularly this year where we're going to be so focused on our top priority issue, it also helps provide guidance on where we're going to be working with other stakeholders like AWC and other coalitions. I envision city staff providing the same thorough feedback that they usually provide on legislation, but perhaps instead of testifying directly before a committee, we're sharing that written feedback either directly with legislators or through other coalitions. And this policy document, while there are many issues in it and allows for our engagement with those coalitions, also allows our focus to remain on the council manic public safety authority. I want to, I'm going to go through some of the items in the policy document just to highlight some, some new additions and some shifts from the previous version because it is an iterative document that is largely reflective of a carryover from the 2023 documents. But I want to just take a moment to talk about sort of taking these two documents. Like I offered you the context for this upcoming session and then have now reviewed for you's high-level, top priority in our policy document. And one of the things I said in the context was the legislature doesn't often take on controversial things during the 2024 session. Let me be clear. Taxing authority is controversial. We are taking on a controversial thing in a short 60-day session, and that's one of the reasons that it makes it such a heavy lift. And, and so I don't want to set any false expectations. It will be a big deal if we're able to get this passed into law because kind of all odds are otherwise against us. But I'm committed to advocating, and AWC is committing to advocating and making it a top priority. So I'm going to just direct your attention to the policy document, which you should have in your materials. I don't have any slides dedicated to the policy document. It is broken down by departments. So there's an administrative section which covers city administration, the city attorney's office, human resources, and information technology. There's an economic and community development section, housing section, and within that, a finance section, parks, public safety and human services, and then public works. And I really just want to highlight for you all that this is where all of the city departments have provided input into me over the years of the issues that are directly impacting their daily business and how we're capturing their needs in the legislative context. Under the administrative, under the administration section, I wanted to highlight for you all that we have a longstanding item on access for non-English speaking individuals and looking for legislative opportunities to help further the language access plan that you all are currently implementing. I'd also highlight right-of-way management since we have seen several policy proposals recently coming out of the legislature that would infringe upon the city's authority to manage its own right-of-way and the importance of that. Under economic and community development, I'd highlight that childcare has been added and is a robust item to provide available childcare throughout the state and be a partner with the state in finding those solutions. I'd also highlight implementation, timing, and resources for planning, development, and permitting staff. The legislature has enacted a significant number of planning bills into law, and those bills take a lot of city staff time and resources in order to implement. So those two statements are really calling on the state to allocate the necessary resources and also to make sure that there's not further changes made prior to your comprehensive plan update. Under housing, we have a statement in support of, strong support of mixed-income communities. This is really an effort to try and help the legislature understand how important it is to have mixed-income communities to facilitate a 15-minute neighbor walking community. In order to support the type of businesses that are needed to create a 15-minute walk shed like coffee shops, grocery store, dry cleaners, and so on and so forth, there needs to be a mixed, mix of incomes living in that neighborhood. Otherwise, the businesses don't have enough market in order to be sustainable. So we're emphasizing that item. Under finance, we're continuing to keep our eye on streamlined sales tax mitigation, or as it has been renamed, the warehousing and manufacturing assistance program. You'll recall that we were very successful in getting that program to be permanent through 2026, so at this point, it is largely a monitor item. Under parks, there's a robust request for increased funding for parks and operation, maintenance and operation funding, which is a longstanding need within the Parks Department. Under public safety and human services, we have some statements about behavioral health and implementation of 988, which dovetail very nicely with a lot of the work that our local legislators are doing on those topics. And then under climate and environment and public works, we're encouraging reductions to the waste stream by encouraging recycling and the reduction of plastics and are focused on the timely implementation of all the projects that we got on schedule during the 2023 session. I think with that, I will stop, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about either what to expect this next session, and I'm open to your feedback on the draft top legislative priority and policy document before you.
Well, thank you very much for being here, Brianna. Appreciate your report. Any questions or comments about this for Brianna? Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Brianna. As always, you've done an amazing job last session and previously. I think we've had some great wins, and it makes sense to focus on this as a top priority, but it's not very likely to pass in the next few years, I think, unless something changes in elections next year. So I mean, I like the policy document we have. I think there's a great opportunity there for a lot of things, but I think council would be, I think we would be all open to help you and support you in any way we can, talking to any individuals you think we might have an impact on. But I don't have personally any, a lot of hope on this one, so.
Let me give you a little more hope, a little more hope. I mean, I, I want to set realistic expectations, but also I don't want you to be so down about our effort. I do think it's possible, absolutely, and especially with the Association of Washington Cities making it a priority, I think that it, that is very helpful, right? If this was just the city of Kent, then I think we would kind of be sunk, but we have the support of the broader association and several other stakeholders that are currently in development of their legislative agenda are also considering making it a top priority. So we will not be alone in asking for this. The other item is that, you know, the House and the Senate are both controlled by strong Democrat majorities, and historically, Democrats have been very supportive of empowering city councils to take tax votes and other council manic action to lead their community. Historically, it has been Republicans that have objected to authorizing council manic taxing authority. So the legislature is, the political makeup of the legislature lends itself well to this. The other component is, and I think this is where you all can be helpful, is emphasizing that this is not the legislature taking a tax vote, so it's not, it's not controversial tax policy in that manner. This is them authorizing you all to take a tax vote, and you are the ones that are going to need to have the hard conversations with the community about imposing this tax. And I think to the extent that you have personal conversations with legislators and can emphasize that, it would certainly assist the effort. We've been reaching out to legislators thus far, and we've been getting positive feedback. I don't want to name names or put any legislators on the spot, but it's thus far been positive and encouraging. So while I think that if you were to look at this and say, short 60-day session, it's tax policy, gosh, Brianna, you're like really dreaming. Yeah, but when you dive into the details of it, you look at who our stakeholders are that are supporting us, you see the feedback that we're getting from legislators, it seems, within the realm of possibility.
That's good to know because I, I mean, I think just the Democrat caucus, I think it's the public safety piece. I think it's kind of.
Yeah. Yona, thank you for that, thank you for that question. I mean, this, this is good dialogue and the same dialogue we're having with legislators. So the definition of public safety is very broad, and so this would authorize revenue from this tax to be spent on sure officer recruitment and retention, but also prosecution, public defense, community courts, alternative response systems, co-responder systems, and many of those are priorities for the legislature right now. And given the shifts around possession of controlled substances, at the city level, the cities are seeing an increased need for city prosecution, city defense, diversion programs, alternative court programs, and that need is being driven by state policy. So the state giving us the tools to implement the policies that they have just authorized or enacted, I think can be a compelling case.
Thank you. That gives me a little bit more positive.
Councilmember Thomas, followed by Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will go ahead and make the motion, but as maker of the motion, I would like to address that.
Let's see, do we have any more questions?
I have a question.
Yes, and then we'll leave that for the comment part. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you, Council Chair. So Brianna, I understand, you know, thank you. I do feel a little bit better after Councilmember Core's question, and I do feel like it's a little bit more hopeful. However, I still wonder, you know, it's been recommended, was it by AWC that this be our only top priority? Or who made the recommendation that we only go forward with one? I guess I'm wondering about the wisdom of if this is 50/50 or 40/60, is it wise to go forward with just one top priority and not have maybe two?
Yeah, that recommendation came from me as a strategic guidance, that if this is, if it is incredibly important to this community to get this legislation across the finish line, given the short 60-day session, I really need the ability to dedicate all of my energy and resources to this. And we need to be asking our legislators to dedicate all of their energy and resources on this, rather than saying, "Hey, help us with this legislation. Also fund this project and work on this bill." In a lot of ways, by focusing on one thing, it really says, "This is how we're going to evaluate whether 2024 is a successful session." It increases the likelihood that, yeah, we may come back and say, "You know what? We didn't have a success this year." But the alternative is that we could come back and perhaps say, "You didn't get your top priority issues, but you got these three other small things that aren't necessarily going to make as big of a difference." So that was the, and trust me, there was a lot of dialogue and discussion that went around sort of that strategic decision with the mayor and with Pat, because you all have typically selected three to five items to be on your top priority list. So this is unique, and this is different, but it is reflective of how much work this item is going to be.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right, before we have the motion, any other questions? All right, Councilmember Thomas.
So, Madam Chair, I would move to approve the 2023 legislative agenda.
Second.
All right.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
It's a 2024 legislative.
Oh, yeah, 2024.
What did I say?
23.
That's close. I live in the past.
All right, so...
I will, Madam Chair, I will be voting no over the consistency of the last 20 years. I'm kind of an anti-tax person. So, and for those of my colleagues that are running for office this fall, I would seriously consider thinking about this before you vote, because campaigning on raising taxes is really going to be difficult for you. And like Brianna says, you know, my first session was a 60-day session, and it's very hectic, and it's go-go-go. The Speaker of the House says, "If you don't have your bills in on the first day, that's it. You won't get any more chances." So think about it, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. I always appreciate the feedback that you provide. But I think something just to keep in mind is this would give us a tool. It doesn't mean we have to do it. It just gives us an opportunity to consider this. And just commenting on AWC, I was on the AWC Legislative Committee, and this wasn't our top priority, and it wasn't our only priority. But for the city of Kent, it was something that I pushed to make sure that AWC saw its importance, and people within that committee see the importance as well. So hopefully, that will drum up a lot more conversation in the legislature as well. And I see Tammy coming up. Tammy, did you want to make a comment?
I do, sorry. I'm trying to sneak up here a little bit. We did have a motion and a second to approve the 2023 legislative agenda. So I did want to suggest if there was maybe a motion to amend.
Or I could withdraw that.
2024 legislative.
Yeah, correct.
I've moved to amend to 2024 legislative agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the 2024 agenda. I think we've, do we have any other discussion on this? Or anyone want to make further comments? All right.
We're talking about the amendment now, right? Correct, okay.
All right, Councilmember Core.
We're approving our 20...
Tammy, I'm sorry, wait. Tammy, do we need to vote on this amendment first? All right, so...
To vote on the amendment. So if you approve the amendment, then the current motion that would be on the floor will be the 2024 legislative session, and then you could continue.
Correct.
All right, so all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so it's been amended. Now we go back to the original motion, and Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're approving our legislative agenda, or voting on legislative agenda right now. Doesn't mean that it's going to pass in the session and doesn't mean we will be voting yes on increasing taxes tomorrow. It's about having the tool, because we do need the funding. And if we have that opportunity, we have that choice to do that. We have that in our pocket to use it in the future when we need it, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you. I know what you're saying. I really do. And I understand what you're saying. However, what we're doing is voting for a tax increase or the ability to increase taxes so that the next year's council, whoever that might be, will have that opportunity to up or down. But what you're telling me, if I'm understanding this motion, you're actually saying, "We approve this agenda, which is first priority, highest priority, is for a tax increase." Am I not correct on that?
We're approving, we're allowing Brianna to take that priority to the legislator, legislature, and advocate for...
The priority is...
That as a, is that correct, Brianna?
Yeah, I'll just direct you to...
So we have a choice.
It is urging the legislature to approve council manic taxing authority.
The authority to...
The authority to, yeah. So the statement and what's on the slide is in your documents as the stated top priority.
But what you're saying is that the council, in its majority, you know, in its wisdom, is saying, "We want you to push this particular agenda." Correct?
Yes.
Correct.
And that's where, okay, that's where I have a problem, because I don't want to approve a tax increase or the ability to increase taxes.
All right, Councilmember Fincher.
Right now, without the money, we don't even have the choice. It gives us, and next, it gives next year's council the ability to make the choice. They still could say no, but they have the chance to say yes and increase what we have now. You know, there's other things that we've talked about, where Olympia has the power to do it, we don't. So looking at local control, it puts that control, some of that control here, giving our folks to look after our folks, the chance to look after our folks and vote yes, and they still could vote no.
But as Brianna's job is to go and represent the wishes of the council. And if your wish is to raise taxes or the ability to raise taxes, that's fine. And that's what it looks like you're doing tonight. And if that's so, that's fine. But I won't be here next year.
All right, so Councilmember Core, do you have any other comments? Okay, so I appreciate the discussion, but are we ready for the vote? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion passes five to one. Thank you very much, Brianna.
My pleasure. Just trying to get the power points. I'm going to leave it to Kim. It was wonderful to see you all this evening, and I look forward to working on your behalf this next session. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next I'm going to welcome Molly up here to talk about the write-offs for uncollected accounts. We've got a couple things back to back.
Yes. Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Molly Bartlamay. I'm the City of Kent Customer Service Manager. I've got two items on the agenda this afternoon. The first is write-offs of uncollectible accounts. So Finance is requesting to write off $62,619.98 of uncollectible receivables. This amount is equal to 3.25% of the city receivable balance, and all of these charges were billed between 2016 and 2019. This process follows Finance's procedures to write off receivables when they are three years delinquent. And this process ensures that we're being consistent as far as when we're writing off these. And there are some exceptions to this. If a department wants to pull something from the write-off list, we could certainly do that. But again, this kind of gives us that standard process. And this process absolutely does not forgive the debt. It remains collectible. We can still collect it. Worth noting that most of the receivable amount requested, or this write-off amount requested, is already in collections. So of that $62,000, $47,000 is already in collections. There is about $15,000 included in the amount that has been deemed uncollectible. So prior to an account going to collections, there is extensive notice provided to the customer. This starts with the department providing an invoice to the customer. When it's delinquent, that is followed up by Finance sending a reminder letter, and then a second reminder letter that kind of references code. Along with that, during this time, a monthly invoice is also being created. And then, no earlier than 90 days after the original invoice, they are sent a 30-day collection notice. So there's lots of work done before getting to this point. So in conclusion, I am asking that you approve the write-off of uncollectible accounts that are owed to the city totaling $62,619.78.
All right, thank you, Molly. I just have one quick question. Does this include, because remember, we had COVID in between there, where we gave a lot of leniency. Does that include, so a lot of those folks were given extra time and multiple notices as well?
Right, so we're not quite there yet. So all of this data is kind of 2016 to 2019. So that is something down the line. As we get to those years, three years out from COVID, we'll probably...
And you'll bring that back to us.
Those numbers, yes.
All right, anyone have questions for Molly? All right, a motion would be in order.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Molly. Good report. I move to authorize the mayor to write off uncollectible accounts owed to the city of the amount of $62,619.98, subject to final approval of the Finance Director.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, next we have some amendments to our city code.
Yes. Okay, so for the second item this evening, Finance is requesting some amendments to Chapter 7.02 to Kent City Code related to water utility billing services. These recommendations kind of fall into two categories. The first is repealing language that does not match our billing processes. And then the second category is more related to adding some clarity and some fee consistency. So relating to billing processes, we are recommending repealing two sections. The first section recommended for repeal is about how billing is done when there is more than one, when there is one meter that services multiple buildings. The reference in code isn't really accurate. In fact, it's not even something our billing system is set up to do. So we are recommending that that be repealed. There's also another section that references rounding bills to the nearest five cents, which is not a process that we do. So we are also recommending that be repealed. For consistency and clarity, we are asking to have one consistent fee when water is turned off and subsequently turned back on by the city. Generally, I think when we think of water being turned off by the city, we think of through the delinquency process. So that process for the city going out and turning off the water and turning back on, there is a $45 fee added to the account at that point. But delinquency isn't the only reason that the city goes out and turns off water. Sometimes, when a home is going to be vacant for an extended period of time or somebody needs to make repairs, they'll contact the city and have us come out and turn off the water and turn it back on. So in code, there's some different references. There's some, a section that says it's $30. There's a section that says it's $30 to turn off, $30 to turn on, $45. So we're just advocating for one consistent fee of $45. The action really is the same of a city employee going out and then making that return trip. So that's really for consistency. The last update is clarifying language when there has been an unauthorized meter turn-on. So that's for when the city has turned off, essentially for delinquency, and there's tampering done to the meter. We just wanted some additional clarity, so we're able to fully recoup those costs of staff having to make, in some cases, multiple trips out and to work on that meter. With that, I'll can open it up to questions. But real quickly, too, I also do want to share some good news. At the end of October, Finance, IT, and Public Works met to do the Data Now Replacement Kickoff Project. Data Now is our, I'm just going to say, older billing system. So we are anxious to get that moving and be able to offer our customers some of these enhancements that they really expect, paperless billing, how they can set up online auto-pay. So we're definitely excited to get that going. We know it's going to be a big project, lots of integrations. But definitely wanted to share that the kickoff has started, and we're anxious to get that going.
Well, thank you. Very good news. Councilmember Michelle, followed by Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Council President. Molly, thank you so much. I'm super excited about auto-pay. That's great. Glad that we're getting that in 2023. My question is about the water shut-off. Not for people who are delinquent on their bill, but for those people who may have had an emergency at home when they have a water leak and they can't figure out how to turn off the water. And so they call the city, and they need someone to come out. And someone comes out and turns it off for them. Do those people have to pay the fee?
That's a great ques... So you're talking about just somebody like kind of an urgent turn-on. And generally, if it's, we usually have people in the area, and if they can just hit it really quick, they'll just do that service. But technically, if it is, definitely if it's an after-hours, that's done through Public Works. But yeah, request for especially an extended period of time where we're going out there and locking it and turning it back on. But generally, if we have somebody in the area and they can just go over and help somebody out, we try to get them out. That's a terrible position to be in. So yeah, we try to get people out there as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I just don't want to be punishing people who are having an emergency and need to get their water turned off right now because there's a leak in their house or in their yard or whatever. And I know that the maintenance workers prefer that they turn off the water, not the homeowner. So I just, I don't want to be charging people because they're having an emergency and they have to have their water turned off.
Right, right.
All right, Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Molly, my question is about, this is a $15 increase. And do we have any type of support for individuals who are already delinquent and not able to pay their bills, and we're shutting off their water, and they're finally able to catch up? And then we're charging?
So this fee, the fee for delinquent turn-offs, that's actually the standard. That's already $45. So it's kind of leveling up those other fees for, for example, like somebody that's gone for an extended period of time, and they're requesting the city come out and lock off their service. So it's leveling that, making that fee consistent. So our act of going out and turning off and locking the meter and then coming back, it's the same if you're requesting it because you're going to be out of your home for a few months, or it's the same price if you're delinquent and we've turned it off. That fee is added, that turn-off fee is added the same day that the shut-off takes place.
Okay, what about individuals who are not able to afford the $45? Do we have a support?
It is, it's hard. You know, our shut-off days are hard. And definitely, we've got a great group of resources that we have, all the account reps have that are taking that calls, so we can direct them to some local agencies.
Okay, so we do provide some resources if there is help needed?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
All right.
All right, a motion's in order.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to adopt ordinance number 4473, amending sections in Chapter 7.02 of the Kent City Code relating to the city's water utility services.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you so much, Molly. And then last, under this section, we have information only, which is the August 2023 financial report. And welcome, Michelle.
Good afternoon, council. I'm Michelle Ferguson, the Financial Planning Manager, and I will be giving an update on the August 2023 monthly financial report. So first up, we'll take a look at sales tax revenue. So they continue to come in higher than budgeted. But you see, September is highlighted in that kind of yellowy-orange color. And looking ahead on the revenues we've already received, those revenues have come in lower than they have the last few months. They are going to be at about $2.8 million, which is still much higher than budgeted. And overall, through 2023 versus the same time last year in 2022, revenues are $1 million higher for sales tax revenue. But just wanted to point that out, that that is something we will continue to monitor and see if that's just a small little blip on the map or that is going to become a trend, seeing how the market is doing. seeing how the market is doing. So we'll give an update on the next report. Highlighted on this slide is the other taxes. So other taxes are mostly made up of BNO tax revenue, and that's budgeted at $19 million. But it also includes admissions tax revenue with a budget of $550,000 and gambling tax revenue that has a budget of $260,000. The July 2023 revenues came in a little lower than in 2022, but you can see that in August, the revenues came in higher and they kind of evened out. So each of these three revenues are estimated to come in higher than budgeted, and collectively, they're estimated to be about $700,000 over budget at year-end. On the next slide, so not a lot has changed since the July report. So anything highlighted on these next few slides are just changes that have been made to the estimated actuals since the last report. So fines and forfeitures on the previous report were estimated to come in about $100,000 under budget, but due to recent activity with increased fine revenues, it's, the estimated actuals are expected to come in slightly over budget. And then miscellaneous revenues have been increased for the estimated actuals to come in almost $2.5 million over budget. This is mostly due to the higher, continued higher interest income that the city has been receiving, but it is also for police reimbursements for overtime and field rentals that are already over budget for the year. And then highlighted on this slide is the criminal justice fund for the revenues. They have been increased by, the estimated actuals have been increased by nearly $1 million since the last report, and this is due to the trend of the continued interest income that the city has been receiving. But it also accounts for $700,000 in federal seized funds that the fund has received in And then on this slide, continued trend of continued interest income has made the estimated actuals go up slightly for the water fund revenues. And on the last slide for page 11 of the report, there were no changes in estimated Any questions?
All right, questions for Michelle? Councilmember Thomas.
Hello, Michelle. And thank you, Madam Chair. Can you go back to slide one, please?
Sure. Sales tax?
So the bottom one, sales tax, is a million dollars over?
A million dollars over the amount that we received last year at this time.
So I don't want to seem to be Mr. Gloom here, but you have a million dollars extra, if I'm reading that right, and now you're considering the possibility, if the legislature approves, to increase the sales tax even more. You've got enough. You've got an extra million. I don't understand maybe--
We do have a structural imbalance, though, with the city's general fund. So we're, the expenditures are not budgeted to, the revenues are not budgeted to cover all the expenditures in the next, by, the next year. So that's kind of where we're looking at.
Okay, and a lot of that was for criminal justice that we were talking about. Could you go to criminal justice slide?
Those revenues are, do have a portion of sales tax revenue, but also it includes the school zone camera revenues, the red light camera revenues, seized funds, and a few other specialty funds that are within the criminal justice overall.
But you're a million dollars over there, too?
That extra, that's in there, that about $2 million extra in revenue, $700,000 is for seized funds, so those are for specialty things. Those have not been budgeted.
Right.
And they're not ongoing. It's a specialty case. But right now, the criminal justice sales tax that we get covers the police that are already in that fund. So there are police officers budgeted within that fund.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions for Michelle? All right, great news. Thanks, Michelle. Next, we move on to economic and community development, and we have one item. It's information only, and Kristin is going to talk about grant applications.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me here today to talk about two upcoming grant applications. The first one is an ECD initiative that's being, well, being led by ECD on behalf of the city, and it's a federal EPA Brownfields grant. We are required, as part of the grant application, to let you all know in a public meeting that we are applying. So this is partially to make sure that we meet that requirement so we can pass-go and be competitive for applying for these funds. Overall, the grant program is for $500,000, and it's due November 13th. It is a community assessment grant where we will identify two target areas. We're focusing on the Midway-West Hill area as well as our downtown area, with the intent that we can then use these ground, Brownfield grant dollars to do some community planning and implementation of our already adopted subarea plans. And so the goal isn't necessarily to do more planning writ large. It's really to look at some site-specific areas that have potential for redevelopment to, to implement the vision that we've already put forward and to work with some community partners that are either public sector or private property owners in the area that may have sites that are really difficult to redevelop because of contamination. Contamination can be from a lot of things. It can be from oil spills. It can be from old gas stations, or dry cleaners are really common. Landfills are another example, or just being near a railroad system where oil can spill over. So as you can imagine, there's, the city of Kent has a lot of those, as it has a long history of having a lot of industrial uses and other commercial uses. And so again, this is just an FYI for you all. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about it. Timing for this, we are going to, it's a joint economic development division and long-range planning effort because there's many components to it. We'll be working with our other city partners. We won't receive the grant until the end of next year at the earliest. So really, it won't interfere with our ongoing initiatives or the comprehensive plan update. It really is perfectly timed so that once we have some added staff capacity, we can get into realizing some of the plans that you all have already adopted and are working on adopting. So happy to answer any questions about that. The second application is for a PSRC or Puget Sound Regional Council grant. This is being co-led by our partners at Public Works, and they are actually the lead applicant because the funding is coming from the surface transportation federal highway dollars. And so it's a transportation-related grant, but it's not required to be spent specifically on a transportation investment per se. So we don't have to use it on a road improvement directly. And so we have long been talking about ways that we can continue to partner together on some of this work and where implementation, again, of our next comprehensive plan could go. We are going to be applying for $750,000 of the funding through their, it's called an equity pilot program. The work that we will be doing with this grant is to plan for a 15- to 20-minute community along the Benson Corridor on the East Hill. So the East Hill has a lot of opportunity on it. BRT is coming in soon. And so this is an area that already, through our Phase 1 community engagement with the public, has said this area deserves a reassessment of what appropriate land uses may be, given the changing conditions that have happened since 2015. And so we already have identified, I think you all remember the heat maps I showed of Benson Corridor kind of lit up as an area where mixed use may be more appropriate or where there may be nodes. And so we're not committing necessarily to saying we're upzoning all of this or we're doing all of this work, but this is an opportunity for us to take whatever comes out of the comprehensive plan and then do what we've done for Meet Me on Meeker and Downtown and Midway and really give that section of our city more detailed attention on what it needs to thrive in, in terms of a redevelopment process. Because we wouldn't want to see all this new development without accompanying infrastructure and all of the other services needed. And so we are jointly applying for this. We will, I think this is one where we're really excited. The long-range planning team will be the project manager at the end of the, if we're successful. But Public Works was really kind because we're short on capacity right now to take the lead on the application part. And then together, again, with other city departments, it will be a joint effort to implement a community vision for that Benson Corridor. Funding for this also starts in 2025. So again, I don't think we could have planned the timing better if we tried, but we are trying to be really proactive in finding some dollars for the implementation and next steps as we go forward. And so that, those are the two grant applications. That one is actually due tomorrow, but we're happy to answer any questions. This was a really quick turnaround from PSRC, and I want to give a shout-out. David and the team he's leading on the application have been just incredible in putting something together. I think we're going to be really competitive.
Well, thank you very much, Kristin. We are very lucky to have great people that work on our grants, and we tend to be very lucky, so I'm hopeful. But I'm going to start--
I think it's luck. I think David has some skill, and Public Works has a lot to bring to it.
Well, I appreciate it. Couple of questions. Councilmember Almer, followed by Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. Kristin, really excited about the PSRC grant. Super excited to hear that and that, you know, Benson redevelopment, anything up there would be fabulous. Question about the first one. Have we applied for Brownfield, Brownfield before, and have we had much luck in securing Brownfield?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I completely missed over this in my notes. We did have a Brownfield grant that was led in the early 2010 timeframe, and it was largely successful. It was led by, it was a joint kind of effort amongst the city, the mayor's office, as well as economic and community development. And one of the outcomes of that, so we identified several sites that had contamination and what cleanup would be. Through that process, we did see the redevelopment of the old cancer care site into the Midway 64 apartments, which is 350 multifamily apartment units. So we have success previously with, the federal government has restructured some of their priorities for funding. I heard last year, all of the communities in Washington that applied for these grants did receive them. So we are very hopeful on this, but we also have to be aware that federally, they may be balancing geographies, and so that may work to our advantage or not. But in terms of a lot of the federal priorities, we think we're well-positioned.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you also. I'm excited. You know, transportation is great, but the Brownfield grants, we've had conversations about those over, just within the past few years, about encouraging to seek those Brownfield grants that have, we've seen model projects around the country, and so it'd be great to have one of those here. So really glad to see that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kristin? All right. Great. Good luck. Thank you. I am going to turn it over to the subject matter chair, Councilmember Cor, for public safety.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item on the agenda. We have grant agreement with Washington Department of Commerce for CLP. And it looks like Police Assistant Chief Andy Grove is here instead of Sarah.
Hello and greetings, Councilmembers. My name is Andy Grove, and I'm an Assistant Chief with the Police Department. And I'm here to advise you that we applied for and received a grant from the Department of Commerce to fund community immersion this year. Community immersion, if you recall, is our training program that embeds newly hired police recruits with community-based organizations for two months of community service work prior to their time in the police academy. So the grant is for $110,000, and it will go to things like paying for stipends to the organizations who host our recruits for their mentorship, oversight, supervision, and training. And also to continue research of the program, we've done a pilot program in 2020, 2021. So that research has been ongoing, and we'll continue to be able to fund that with this grant as well. And if there's any questions about the program, it would run through October of next year, this, this grant. And yeah, we're ready to get started with it. So we're seeking permission to receive the funds.
Thank you. Any questions for Assistant Chief? None? It's a great program. I'm very excited about the funding.
Oh, Councilmember Fincher.
Well, you could continue on. I was just going to say the same thing, that it is a great program. Glad to see the funding. And just to stress the importance of being able to continue, for the ADEP to be able to continue the study that they've been doing on that. So the information that can be garnered from that can lead, hopefully, to other grant information, but also to be able to have proof, something that people can look at and see that this works, that, you know, put that proof behind it, and then hopefully also expand it to other areas, our contribution to the country.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Any other questions or comments?
All right, if not, I'll make a motion. I move to accept $110,000 in grant funds from the Washington Department of Commerce for the Community Immersion Law Enforcement Program and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to terms acceptable to the police chief and city attorney.
Motion and second. Any questions? Any comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Back to you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Assistant Chief.
So much for your support.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Public Works and subject matter chair, Councilmember Fincher.
We are going to hear from Mike McTudis about an amendment to the Republic Services. Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Mike McTudis, I'm the city's environmental engineering manager, and I will be talking about a proposed contract amendment, number two, to our contract with Republic Services as our garbage hauler, garbage recycling yard waste hauler. So the, the contract covers two main items and then a few smaller items as well, cleanup, cleanup items in the contract, just some clarifications. But the two main items deal with the King County rate restructure for solid waste at the transfer stations and the landfills, as well as some scheduling revisions for when the rates get updated each year. So the rate restructure, if you'll remember, King County staff came and spoke to you about this last year. The intent at that time was to implement that at the beginning of 2023. Just because of the complications of updating that countywide, they decided to postpone it a year. So now it is, it is being updated, or it is being implemented as of January 1st, 2024. And so just a big picture, what that means is currently, they get their funding, which is about $120 million, comes from their tipping fees, which people pay when they drop, drop off their, their garbage. The way they're adjusting that is so approximately 20% of that now is going to be charged to the individual cities or their haulers in a form of a fixed annual charge. And the other 80% would be, would be picked up by their tipping fee. So the tipping fee will go down a little bit, and it'll be replaced by this fixed charge. So out of that 120 million plus or minus of their total revenue, about 20, 22 million of that will be part of the fixed charge that will be distributed countywide. The city of Kent is actually their biggest customer. So we are charged for this coming year is just over $2.7 million. So in order to be able to work that into the rates, though, our current contract with Republic does not account for a fixed charge. So we redid some of the language of how to calculate that and included a, an adjustment each year because trying to, to account for differences as the tonnages increase or decrease year to year to make this a revenue-neutral integration into the contract. So that is, that is a big part of what the contract amendment is about. That was the number-one priority because that is being implemented here in the next couple of months. One of the other improvements that we are integrating into the contract is to change, currently, we have rate adjustments that happen, some that happen in January 1st, which is the, the, the King County rate adjustment for their disposal fee happens January 1st each year. And then the inflation adjustment up to this point happens on April 1st, as well as some other adjustments for the sustainability adjustment related to the, what we, is known as a recycle surcharge, related to the China Sword event from a few years ago, as well as the yard and food waste adjustment when Cedar Grove increases or changes their rates. So all of these will now happen January 1st. So we'll have the notice to customers at one time, and it won't, we won't have rated adjusted January 1st and then again on April 1st. So that, that is the other major change included in the contract amendment. Just to, one of, one of the other items that's included in the motion is that part of the contract amendment, number one, which included the recycle surcharge, stated that if, if the rate is high, if the rate increase is more than 5% of the original recycle surcharge, which you can see up on the screen, which was 96 cents per single-family resident and $2.98 per cubic yard for multifamily and commercial. So we don't have the, the final numbers on that yet for this coming year, but we know it will be more than 5%. It'll be approximately 15% increase over the original year, which was five, five years before. It'll be about, so, so for a single-family customer, it's approximately 14 cents more than, than it was in 2019. So that is, that requires a city council approval as part of the contract. A couple other items that we are changing are just clarifying some of the language in the, in the contract. One is for days when temperature is 90 degrees or higher. It allows the contractor to start an hour earlier to get to, to stay out of the heat. So just to move a little bit higher. Clarify some of the languages on liquidated damages for overweight trucks by the contractor. And it clarifies just the administration, the administration fee, which goes to fund city efforts for city crews to go out and clean up the ride of way and pick up garbage that gets dumped on, on city streets. So it clarified some of the language for that. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from anyone?
I also have Jeff Wagner from Republic Services is also here.
Councilmember?
Yeah, so question. So the tipping fee is coming down, and will be replaced by the fixed, the fixed charge?
Correct.
Is it somewhat equal, or are we still looking at significant increase?
I, yes and no. So they, they did, they're, they're adding inflation between 2023 and 2024. So they did incorporate, they did, it is lower, in 2024, it will be lower than 2023. But what, it won't be a straight 20% cut to the rate because they added inflation on top of that.
Councilmember?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. My question is, how is the city of Kent the largest customer?
Because of our warehouse base, the industrial area, commercial area we have in the valley.
Anything else? In that case, I move to authorize the mayor to sign agreement number two to the contract between the city and Republic Services of Kent, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney.
There's more to the motion.
That is one.
Oh?
Yeah, I need a second.
Second.
It was an updated motion.
Yeah, there's an updated.
Do not have a copy of it there.
I have it here.
Is that the updated one? The one that says amendment two? Okay.
Read the updated one.
We need to amend the motion.
There comes Tammy.
Was there a second on that motion as well?
Yes.
Correct motion. So I would recommend that we do a motion to amend, to the one that's actually in the pocket.
I move to amend the motion to the, to the newly to be read motion.
Okay, so we have to vote on the amendment. So do I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we can go on with the current motion.
I moved to authorize the mayor to sign amendment number two to the contract between the city and Republic Services of Kent, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Public Works Director and City Attorney, and to approve the sustainability adjustment for 2024 in accordance with amendment number two.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion carries for that amendment and this, including the sustainability adjustment for 2024.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. And thank you so much, Tammy, for keeping us on track today. Appreciate it. All right, that brings us to the bottom of this agenda. We are going to adjourn until workshop. Thank you, everybody. Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the Kent City Council Workshop for Tuesday, October 17th, 2023. We just have one item on the agenda. We're continuing our conversation on the 2024 mid-biennium budget adjustments. And Paula is here to answer our questions, and welcome.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. Great to be here. Today is our third and final workshop on the 2024 mid-biennium budget adjustment. I had no questions to bring forward, to answer at least this time around. So what we're going to do is just walk through really quick at a high level what's in our 2024 mid-biennium budget adjustment. Provide you one more opportunity to ask questions if you have them. Overall, this budget adjustment is nearly $19.2 million in total. 2.6 million of that is within the general fund. There's an increase of 5.5 million in our special revenue funds, about $630,000 increase to capital projects funds, 6.5 million increase to our enterprise funds, $4 million increase to internal service funds, and barely mentionable decrease to our debt service fund. But, you know, we'll just put it all up there for true transparency. All right, so this 2024 proposed budget will have revenues of $408.8 million for all total funds. Of that, 120.8 million will be within the general fund. The proposed budget includes expenditures of $443.8 million for all funds, of which 121.9 million is within the general fund. When we put this budget together, we did take a look at citywide baseline adjustments, looking both from the revenue side and the expenditure side. Many of our revenues saw increases. So those increases were incorporated into the revenues that we just talked about a minute ago on the prior screen. We did see some decreases in some revenues, particularly looking at our external utility taxes. We saw decreases with telephone and cable utility. We're not surprised by that. We've been seeing that, I think, just about every time we talk about budget. We also saw some decreases in some of our shared revenues. On the expenditure side of the House, we did see increases in, in variations in many areas. Cost of living increase, we'll talk about that in a minute. Same with the medical, that did go down. But there's a variety of cost allocations that do occur that could have positive or negative increases to, or adjustments to the original budget. Those are for a variety of our insurance funds, our internal support department allocations, et cetera. The baseline budget adjustments were originally established with cost of living increases of 4% for asthma and non-reps, and 3.5% for Teamsters. Those contracts were under negotiation at the time that the budget was originally put together. They have been finalized. So now the budget had to be adjusted to be able to account for the cost of living adjustment, which was tied to CPIW for Seattle, Tacoma, and Bellevue. That was at 4.5%. We had originally had a 5% increase to our self-insured medical fund. That is not necessary for the 2024 budget, so therefore those expenditures were reduced. There were some slight adjustments to our retirement plans, and expenditures were adjusted accordingly. And then finally, our insurance funds, the insurance allocations. We had anticipated needing to provide additional dollars to those insurance funds through the cost allocations to the various departments. Those allocations ended up coming in greater than we had anticipated. So that has also been included as part of those baseline adjustments. So when we start looking at the general fund only, the original adopted budget was for $116.2 million. We did make additions to that budget of $3.1 million in taxes, and then about $1.5 million in other areas. We had seen increases in most areas with exception to our intergovernmental, which is our state shared revenue, and our jail and court contracts. And then finally, looking at the general fund expenditure side of the budget, that budget was initially adopted at $119.3 million. The baseline adjustments that we talked about just a few moments ago, that netted about $884, $885,000 increase to those general fund expenditures. You'll note that some of those increases are offset by reductions in our transfers out and reductions in allocations. In addition to that, departments did have some requests. Those requests did come forward with offsetting expenditures or revenue sources. Nearly $1.7 million in additions were added to the general fund budget. That being said, we had an adopted budget of revenues at $116.2 million. The expenditures were $119.3 million. So when we adopted that budget, we anticipated using nearly $3.1 million of our fund balance. We did see increases in both the revenue and the expenditure side of the House. The revenues increased at a greater rate than our expenditures did. And because of that, we're only going to be using $1 million of fund balance versus the $3.1 million fund balance. There were some capital additions for the Capital Resources Fund for security upgrades to city facilities, the web application firewall implementation, and intranet redesign, and as well as e-connect replacement. There's a little asterisk there because that is actually coming out of a life cycle budget. So it's really not an increase in budget authority. But we did want to point out that we were going to be doing that project. So today is October 17th. This is our final workshop on the budget. I'm happy to answer questions that you guys may have. Later this evening, we'll hold three public hearings, the 2020, well, I will hold three. I think there's four. Sorry. Yes, thank you. I will be holding three public hearings this afternoon. One on the 2024 property tax levy, the 2024 budget, and the 2024-29 capital improvement plan. On November 7th, we'll come to committee of the whole with the budget review and recommendation. And then November 21st to adopt the budget and all of its related materials. So at this point, I would be happy to take any questions if you guys have any.
Thank you so much, Paula. Again, a great job for you and your staff. The fact that nobody really has any questions at this point, I think, shows that you've done a great job explaining things and answering the previous questions we had. Councilmember Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this question is probably more for Tammy. If on November 7th, there are no recommendations or changes, and we, obviously tonight, we'll have public input on November 7th, is it possible to approve the budget at that time?
I'm not sure what the current schedule is for when that budget would be finalized and ready to move forward.
It's the 21st instead of the 7th.
Yes.
I'm asking if, just by chance, no recommendation, even tonight? I don't think we have much, but tonight, we don't have any changes or questions. But we can't do that yet. We have to have the public hearing. I understand that. But now by November 7th, you'll have had the public input, you'll have had ours, changes if any, which right now are none, could then on November 7th, we accept the budget?
Assuming staff could get the entire budget presentation that they provide to you, I don't see a hurdle to that happening.
Or does it have to be at a public, or does it have to be at a council meeting, not a committee of the whole?
Committee of the whole, straight to the council.
So we would have to have a special meeting because we only have committee of the whole, I believe, on that.
What they're asking is whether we can skip committee of the whole.
No, no, you could have a committee of the whole, but later on that evening.
I think he's asking if we can vote on the budget prior to November 21st.
That's one way to put it.
So that we didn't have to have a council meeting on the 21st.
Oh, we need to have a council meeting on the 21st.
Yeah.
We've already canceled a, a meeting in December.
Yeah.
We canceled, we're canceling the meeting right after the first of the year, and we're getting compressed with a lot of stuff right now. We're having a hard time managing your time. So I'm not sure we can cancel that meeting on the 21st.
I was just looking at the, on November 21st, we have a, a large agenda. I just think it might help things a little bit, clear things up.
Yeah, I don't see any objection to it moving forward on November 7th, assuming staff can get all of the work that's done and needed on the budget. That's a piece outside of my knowledge.
And that we could do. If we wanted to move it for committee of the whole, then move it to the, that later, that night for approval.
That's what I.
Do that paperwork part.
I guess that's what I'm asking. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I think to disclose that out,
Yes.
I will talk to the council president about that, since he typically handles the. I will talk to the council president about that since he typically handles the agenda setting. Does that sound good?
Yeah, you bet.
Perfect. All right.
All right. Any other questions for Paula?
That was a trick question. Took three of us. Yes.
Well, again, Paula, I appreciate all the work you've done on this, and we will see you later this evening at council.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
All right, so very quick meeting. Thank you all. We will convene back here for the council meeting at 7:00. We are adjourned.